Is green now? Okay, I gotta do this again. Call in the meeting to order at 3:10. Sorry for being late. Technical difficulties caused that. We are in open session. First item 1.2, could we have the roll call for establishing quorum? Okay, all in favor? Are we all here? Are all trustees here? Yes, we're all here except trustee Nicolau who's joining and student trustee. Okay. Okay, any statements of conflict? Left, right, not seeing any. Are there any public comments? No? Okay. Now you're on. Now we will now announce the items for discussion in closed session.
So item 2.1, public employee discipline dismissal release complaint. Item 2.2 conference with labor negotiators, CSCA. Item 2.3 conference with legal counsel existing litigation title nine case complainant one. Item 2.4 existing litigation title nine complaint, complainant two. And item 2.5 conference with legal counsel existing litigation case John Martin at all the Board of Governors of California Community Colleges, case number three four dash two twenty twenty two dash zero zero three two eight four zero two dash CU dash OE dash GDS.
Okay, at 3:10 we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. And we'll be back later.
Call to order, the Wednesday, July 2nd, 2024, regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College Board of Trustees. The 10th, what did I say? You know, I promised I wasn't gonna screw up, and I've already screwed up, July 10th. Okay, very good. Okay, call to order, please. It's not wrong. Call to order, please. Yes, pledge, you get to do it again.
All right, wonderful. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, roll call, establish a quorum, please.
Student trustee Gustavo Caserón.
Present.
Thank you. And as a reminder, the light, when you turn it on, it's green for yes, for volume. Trustee Beggs?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Present.
Trustee Garrett?
I have a green light, and I'm here.
Trustee Hinton?
Here.
Trustee Aguilash, Vice President Aguilash?
Here.
And Board President Richards?
I'm here, thank you. We have no report out of closed session. Any statement of conflicts of interest, looking left, right, not seeing any, any changes of order of business? Not seeing any. Before we go to public comment, we're fortunate that we've recruited some new employees for some very critical positions, so Chance will go.
Thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce the new Vice Chancellor of Information Technology and Institutional Research, Locust Bogle. Dr. Tran will introduce Vice President of Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Columbia College. We are so thrilled to add a new member to our team, so at this time, I'd like to introduce you to our new Vice President of Instruction, Dr. Donna Cooper.
At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Members of the public are reminded, you have four minutes to speak. I don't have any cards. Is there anybody that wants to come up and talk on any item not on the agenda? Thank you. Okay, moving on. Board Committee reports. Board Finance Committee?
It's with regret and sadness, I have nothing to report tonight.
Board Policy Committee, trustee Hinton. Modesta Junior College Foundation, trustee Beggs?
Nothing at this time.
Columbia College Foundation, I think you said nothing? I think you told me association stuff, nothing. Valley Insurance Program Powers Agency Report, Chance Lee. Okay, now we have Board Ad-Hoc Committee Self-Evaluation Instrument. The Board of Trustees conducted the annual Board Self-Evaluation on August 9, 2023. During their board meeting, trustees recommended that they receive sufficient information to make decisions and suggested reviewing the self-evaluation document before the next annual self-evaluation process. The self was last reviewed by Board Ad-Hoc Committee in May of 2019. Board President Richards designed a, designated a Board Ad-Hoc Committee to review the Board Self- evaluated instrument with trustee Beggs, Hinton, and Nicolás committee members. The ad hoc committee met on the 27th. Okay, moving on to number five. Presentations, Columbia Student Services Update.
Thank you, President Richards. Good evening, everyone. I have the great pleasure of introducing my fantastic team tonight, so that they can share with you all the wonderful things we do in student services here at Columbia College. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Melissa Raby, I'm the Vice President of Student Services. And I'd like to introduce, in addition to our Dean of Student Services, Mike Igoe, who could not be here tonight, we have five directors. Courtney Sutton, Michael Baldwin, Leslie Mishthavi, Marnie Shively, and Annika Rogers Whitmer. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let them share with you what they have.
Thank you, please proceed.
I was probably holding it back. Oh, see, okay. Good evening, I almost said good morning. Good evening, Board of Trustees, thank you, Melissa, for our introduction. We're really excited to be here this evening and present on student services here at Columbia College. As we were talking about this presentation as managers and thinking of it, the themes that really came to light were collaboration, small and strong and connected. So when you do think about our student, when we think about our student services division, we think that those are our strengths, that we rely on each other through the collaboration, and our small campus, which allows us to remain strong. And so it's really in those relationships that we build on campus and off campus that we believe that are our themes and where our strengths are. So I'm excited to present on outreach and retention. And so, starting on the outreach side, I think our department is intentionally designed to complement each area within the division as well as outside of that. So we can't do outreach without all of us that are invested in all of the stakeholders that are invested in outreach. Part of those big stakeholders that I think get left out a lot are our student ambassadors. So we can't do our outreach and meet our goals without that student team, and so I wanted to make sure to highlight them. So when you look at our retention and our team, our team does incorporate career services, international programs and services, Starfish implementation, which in itself is collaborative and a communication tool at its base.
And you're big on Starfish, right?
I am big on Starfish, thank you. I am never gonna let a chance to not talk about Starfish.
Very good.
And as we go through our presentation, what I didn't mention, which Annika would like me to highlight and remember, is that at the bottom, I worked on this graphic really hard. So as we go through, you're gonna see that our student timeline begins with outreach and then moves through that, and at the end, we're gonna get all the way to student success, which is color coordinated as we go through. And I worked really hard on that, so please, make sure to pay attention to the timeline at the bottom. So right now, we're under outreach, and outreach includes all those areas, but when you break down outreach, it really includes collaboration, communication, access, and getting students on the path. So collaboration at Columbia really is our outreach team. So the outreach team is every stakeholder. So dual enrollment, financial aid, athletics, it's really everybody who has any kind of stake in outreach, any CTE department, every apprenticeship, they're all a part of that team. Some of the tools that we use to communicate is through our outreach quarterly meetings. We focus on retention and engagement. We use an annual important dates now that we use annually that we share campus-wide that's been really effective. We also use internally a shared calendar to know who's doing outreach where, which community partner that is, who's not covered, who we still need to do outreach to, and a shared contact list, which includes employers and now our huge K-16 collaborative, too. Teams chat, we've been really big with our teams chat, and that's been really useful. One of the big things that developed out of COVID is that with outreach and retention, the access points have to be both in person, have to be remote, and we have to be able to meet students where they're at. So that means different ways to do application workshops, different ways to orient students, meaning in person and online, providing different ways to provide registration support and access workshops. And including parents, families, and supporters to those different events and opportunities. Because if we're missing out on those students or those populations to help our students, that's just a missed opportunity for retention. And then with outreach, it's getting them on the path. So focusing on course placement, getting them connected to counselors right away, and going through the orientation process are ways that we know in outreach that will help a student retain and get through that outreach process. And what a better way to start with outreach than in dual enrollment. So I'm gonna take this opportunity to hand it off to my manager, Mike Baldwin, in dual enrollment.
Hi, I'm Mike Baldwin, Director of Dual Enrollment. I've been here about five years, but five months in this position, and I'm just really excited that I've been working with such a great management team with me here. For those who don't know, dual enrollment allows our local high school students to take college courses simultaneously while they work on a high school diploma. There's a few different programs within this. We have our CCAP programs, our college and career access pathways, allowing them to take college courses on the high school campus. Our special admin students who are taking classes online here on the college campus in their own time, as well as our early and middle college programs. Talking with our high schools and our high school students, they really prefer these CCAP courses because they're on the high school campus, usually with an instructor from our college or a high school instructor who meets minimum qualifications. And they're with high school students during the school day. It's a population that they're accustomed to, teachers are used to during a time that they're used to the school. With that for fall coming up, we have 25 CCAP sections across nine high schools. Like Courtney mentioned, oftentimes, we're part of the outreach team, and we're the first point of contact for these students. It's a team of two, myself and a program specialist. She has over 20 years of experience with college and high schools. I've worked at the local high schools here. I'm from this community. I know this community well. So I'm really excited to serve this dual enrollment population with a friendly face as well. And because of my experience here at the college for these last five years, I'm really connected with the wonderful classified professionals, admin faculty who support our students. And so knowing when students come to me, I know who I can connect them to to increase their student success. Speaking on that, I know all of Student Services and the college is focused on student success, but it's a pillar of dual enrollment. Trying to remove any barriers we can, helping students in every obstacle they may face. And this program really speaks for itself. We see statewide data showing that dual enrollment students graduate at higher success levels, get better grades. And they tend to enroll in the college where they're duly enrolled after they graduate high school, which is a great opportunity to continue to work with the programs in place to allow these students to come to Columbia College. So most of what I'm hearing from these high school students, they love that the fees have been waived, this is a free program for them, and then they get to access the promised program here when they graduate high school. With the Student Services Team, it's been a wonderful opportunity to work closely with them, with the admissions group. We're trained to help students enter the college as well. We're able to track them in the system and go through the same processes that the admissions team is doing. Outreach efforts, we're coordinating with MEOC with special programs to do application workshops. We're working with the outreach team to make sure that these students know about this program. And we're working on implementing Starfish. We can send these students resources and communication, which they're not on the campus typically, so this is a great way to do that. We've made a canvas page for dual enrollment. We're updating our webpage and forums, so it's a fairly new team here, but we're really excited to just keep that momentum going. Once the student's in the system, we're just making sure that they're having the accommodations they need. So students who have IEPs, I have a four plans, we connect them with TSPS staff, and we work very closely with the foster and forward program here to make sure that students in that population get the resources they need. So again, dual enrollment, it's huge across the state. It's really growing here. We're just really trying to make it easier for these students as they transition into college. Part of that success that we see with dual enrollment students is because they're getting those resources early. They're getting accustomed to the college environment, and by the time they enter as a college freshman, they're used to the environment here. We've created Dual Enrollment Center with that space. It's just another hub of resources. Whether they come to us and we can direct them where to go on campus, whether they need tutoring or mental health services, or whether they go to admissions or financial aid, and they need to learn more about dual enrollment, they can come up to our center and not just access resources, but our hope is that high school students can have a welcome and accommodating place for them to study, wait for rides for parents, and feel just comfortable in an environment with similar peers. And this program, as you saw, is just completely growing. I'm a Somerville alum myself, and so working with them, we're developing early college. I got to attend their graduation, and I, just listening where these students are going as they're walking across the stage, about 70 to 80% are going to Columbia College. Brett Hart, we're working on an early college for next year. I'm working closely with the principal and superintendent there. And we're seeing with the middle college at Snore High School, they're shattered their record numbers, and that's just for their middle college. They also have special admin and CCAP programs. We actually had a student in May attain her associates, and then she graduated from high school in June. And we're hoping to keep that going with other schools with these, with these early college programs to allow them to either get an associate's, a certificate, or at least some credits as they continue their college journey. While we're positive, you know, we're trying to stay one step ahead of the challenges that we might face. Just trying to let people know, this is a free program. You can access it when you're 13 years old. So we're going to reach out to eighth graders to try and let them know that this program exists. So by the time they're high school freshmen, they know their pathway. They don't have to figure it out by the time they enter high school and then, and take a year or two. You know, it's, it's a two-person team, and we're really lucky. We get to lean on so many wonderful departments here as we grow this program. And the high schools are also small, so they don't always have the staff to support these, so we're hoping to provide them with resources and visits and just make sure that these students and these high schools are supported. And then one challenge we are facing is these high school students tend to get caught in the fraud filter, even with less than 1% fraud score. Luckily, again, very close relationship with the great admissions team here, catching these students before they, they even know they're, they're, they're in the spam filter, or if they are caught in this filter, we're helping them as quickly as possible, so it's not a hindrance on their registration. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Leslie, our Director of Admissions.
Trustee Aguilar has a question for you. He's like, man, I got away. What would, would you say your title was again?
I'm the Director of Dual Enrollment Programs.
Do you have a counterpart in Modesto?
The Dean of Enrollment Services in Helica is my closest counterpart.
Great job. Looks like you like what you're doing, and you're doing a great job, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
He is doing a great job. I want to talk a little bit about admissions and records. As exciting as it is, we have a very small team. We work very closely together, and I'm very fortunate to work with these folks. Everything we do, we do to support students from when they apply to when they register, when they're filing forms, when they need their evaluations done on their transcripts, grade changes, all that fun stuff. That's our focus, is always what's best for the student. So things that we are proud of in our department. We have a close working relationship with everybody in the division and outside of the division, too. And we've also made a nice relationship with Enrollment Services down at MJC. When I first started here, Melissa asked me to see if I could get a relationship going and work closely with MJC. So before COVID, we kept in touch and had calls. We would sit around, you know, use the regular phone and sit around and have these meetings with IT and MJC and us, got to know each other, and then we got to make a trip down there to visit, establish these friendships. We see them at conferences and everything else, so it's very, very helpful. Now we have a Teams chat, so we're, I think we're high and mighty now, but we can just message back and forth. Hey, what do we do for this? Have you guys had this situation? So we've established a really nice relationship across the district, which I'm proud of. We've also increased our number of graduates. Every year, we keep getting more and more students graduating. And we found that auto awarding, I don't know, I'm sure you've heard of it, a lot of colleges are doing auto awarding now. And we have, we've been able to do it, but we, we have to do it. We can't do it, we can't run a big process to do it. We've been kind of our, one of our staff is doing it student by student by student. So we did increase last summer. We have a period of time where she can go through and find students that did not apply for an award. Maybe they got a degree, but they didn't apply for a certificate. So Megan was going back through and awarding those students their certificate. It's great for our enrollment. It helps us a lot. Hopefully, we'll get, get to the point where we can auto award and run a process that would make it a lot easier for us. Today, on a call with Joe Macklin, we were talking about looking at different vendors that can help us with that. And then we finally got the CVC up and running. This is a project we've worked on with IT and MJC, and we got, we've become a teaching college, as you guys, you probably know. And this summer, we're gonna hopefully be able to see soon if we've added how much, how many more enrollments we've added, opening up our college classes that are online with notebook fee to get filled from all across the state, which I think is awesome for us. Yes. Oh, California Virtual College, sorry. I'm like, no, that's, that's what I need Marnie for.
Yeah, I asked though, so CVC, and she's just.
Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry. Yes, yes. And yeah, it's, it's so far so good. We, we'll see how it goes at the end of the summer. Let's see here. And then challenges. We always have challenges, but somehow our little team of four seems to get through it. We've, our challenge right now is we have to do more MIS reporting with all the, the different bills and things coming down. There's all the regulation we have to keep up with, so I really needed a person to help me with that because our little team supports veterans, athletes, and international students, too. So we helped Courtney with that. So I promoted one of my staff to a little bit higher level so she can work on more IT projects and reporting and help me out with that. So that's, that's been a challenge, but we had a little solution for it with Megan, so that was good. The fraud applications, I'm sure you've heard about, too, with coming out of COVID. So many students have been applying in little weird little groups, you know, that they, they move around from school to school. I see a lot on the listserv with our other colleges asking, hey, does this student go there? And like, almost every college was like, yeah, he was here, he was here, he was here. Well, what happened last, last, in spring is that we had a group that had signed up for a welding class, and our welding classes, sorry, oh, thank you, Marnie, see, she's so helpful, have like 18 spots because it's a lab, it's hands-on, you have to have a spot to be able to do the work. And the, the, this group of fraudulent, I don't know what to call them, people signed up and took like two-thirds of the spots, and we were able to work with CCC Apply with Marnie and her team and financial aid, figure out who, that these were people on a, in a group and be able to drop them, because otherwise, you have all these people on the waitlist that can never take the class because they're not gonna show up the first day, and they're not gonna pay. So that has taken time for my staff to research and worry about that. But we're doing it, we're doing it. It's just extra stuff that we have to put, build time in for. And then speaking of the new regulations, there's always new regulations, so we're on lots of calls and working with MJC and IT and trying to get our systems in, in place so that those new regulations can, can work. So that takes time, too. I mentioned the international student support. That's fairly new to our office, and we only have one student right now. But it's communication back and forth with lots of people, following up, and a lot of people may, you know, communicate with you and then never show up. So there's a lot to take on in that, too, but we're doing it, we're doing it. One of my employees, Dylan Gomez, who's here today and presenting on something else later, he's taken on that role, so that's another thing he's adding to his plate. So regardless, we have our challenges, but we find a way every time, and we love working with all the other divisions and everyone at this college. I'm very, I just want to tell you all, I'm very fortunate to work here. I wouldn't want to work anywhere else, so thank you. Now I'm gonna pass it on to Marnie, who already has the clicker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marnie Shively. I'm the Director of Student Financial Services here at Columbia College. I again want to point out this wonderful bar at the bottom, showing all the things we're talking about. I do want to say that I did not want the mustard yellow. I wanted green for money, but I'm putting up with it anyways. So financial aid, honestly, is the, it's kind of mustard, yellow, gold, I don't know. Financial aid is actually one of the cornerstones of student success. If students can't afford their books, their living supplies, transportation to and from their classes, their wifi, they're not gonna be successful. So financial aid is a huge pinning point for all of our students. As you've heard my counterpart so far say that when they talk about outreach, when we talk about student success, I'm very proud to hear that my office has come up so much. I do want to tout, I am an office of four, that's including myself. I am a working manager. You will see me out the window serving students. We are extremely low-staffed, but we are mighty. We are very mighty. In the 2324 year, so far, because we're still paying students, we've dispersed over five, excuse me, $7.5 million to our communities. That's a lot of money for Little Tooluma County and Calaveras County, and we're very proud of our students who we are helping succeed at this time. We've also talked a lot about fraud. There's been fraud identification going on through my staff for the last two years. Unfortunately, during the last board meeting we were at Columbia, I heard about this great FTE increase at Columbia College, and I unfortunately got in touch with our researcher and was like, hey, I found a fraud ring. We need to take care of this. It did affect about 50 students, but at least we're catching them. We're not paying them financial aid. We're dropping them as soon as we can, and we are making things happen. Very proud.
Sure. I'm just curious, because I know this is a statewide problem. When they find these fraudulent hubs of students, or, and I guess it could be one guy with, using a bunch of different identities or whatever, does law enforcement go after them, or do they just move to a different college?
So AGI, the Office Inspector General, sorry, I had to think about that one. If I had my very first fraud individual a few years back, and he laughed at me when I said I have one person to report for fraud, because we have one inspector for all of the West Coast, we're talking Alaska, Hawaii, Washington, you know, Oregon, California, Nevada, and Idaho. Unless you've got large numbers, it doesn't mean anything. However, I am a proponent of Columbia College, and it means a lot to our budget. It comes out of Trevor's pocket. It comes out of all of our pockets, so it is a big thing for me, but it's not something that I can take up the line to the Department of Education. I hope that answers.
Yeah. I was just wondering if any resources statewide are, are doing anything about this, and it doesn't sound like they are.
I know that CCC Apply has put in some measures. That's what's being blocked through the Admissions and Records Office, my counterpart with Leslie. However, students who applied to CCC Apply last year or previous years, who just keep bouncing from college to college to college, are in the system and will never get caught. We do notice that we find a lot of pods, we'll call them, students all within a one mile, or like a one-block radius who are questionable. They answer the financial aid applications the same way. We have put barriers in place where they need to come to our office and identify themselves, so we can prove that they're not fraud individuals. So we, too, are doing our own, and I know that Columbia College is forming a team to make sure that we come up with our own policies for Columbia College.
So I guess, another question. So the whole point of this is for them to collect the financial aid?
Mostly, yes.
And they get sent a check, or they put it in their bank account, or how does that work?
We disperse through a third party called BankMobile, so if you are paid financial aid, it goes out to our third party to this person, who we assume is a student, but yes, they're not. And I will say again, when we're talking about strong and mighty, I am very proud to say my financial aid office has paid zero financial aid students since all of this has began, because we are diligent. We do a little bit more than we should with our review, but I'm very proud to say that.
Good job. And by the way, I agree with you, agreeing would have been much better.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's good. So some of the challenges, I would say, that we're, we're seeing right now in the 2425 year is this wonderful thing called FASPA, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid Simplification Act. There is nothing simple about this. It is the largest changes to financial aid in over 40 years. It does, however, make the process for the student to complete a little easier. However, we are having to reprogram all of our systems. We have to wait half the time for Lucian to get up-to-date information so that we can update our programs. One of the downfalls is the Department of Education is still making changes on a daily basis. So we are moving forward the best we can, but we are gonna have to tell students for the 2425 year, your award is tentative. The government could come in and make changes. We could request additional documents, but we are moving forward. We just brought in over 3,000, what we call an Iser, a financial aid application, and we're processing those for the next fall semester.
I don't know if it's a rumor, or if it's true, or, or why, but there, maybe it's an upside of the FASPA debacle. Maybe it's an upside of the FAFSA debacle. That's too strong a word. That because students weren't. They're kind of a, they're unsure if they're going to get the award or when it will come in. So you know what? I'm going to go to community college. Are we, is that factual, you think? Are we seeing updated enrollment because of the FAFSA?
So the theory behind the finance, the federal financial aid is you apply in October. So that when you're going to, let's say in California UCs or CSUs. They can go ahead and give you an award offer when they send out your admittance in March. The application did not open up for the 2425 year until December 31st and then the system went down. And then everything else kept being blocked. So students going to our four-year universities were not getting award letters. And they're still getting tentative, maybe offers. So yes, because we're, we are community colleges. We do have a lot more come financially, you know, it's free college for community college students. We are, I think, going to gain a lot more students that way. Or the light up of their online classes. Yes. So yes. We will see them on Starfish. So we talked a lot about all of our outreach and our partners. Financially does not have an outreach person, but we do go out as Department of Education experts. And we help students and their parents complete the financial aid application. We do this twice a year. We do it in October and we do it in February. Again, I said, I'm a working manager. Me and my three other staff members can't do it by ourselves. So we partner with our MEOC group. We partner with our outreach group. It's great to help get that community information out there. We offer community Zoom meetings. So for the month of January, February, March and April, we had at least one Zoom night every week. For where we were available for any community member, whether you're coming to Columbia College or not. To complete the FAFSA application and they were very well attended. Something I was writing on the wall is talking about our outreach partnerships. As per COVID, we started doing a lot more of online things, as we're updating our financial aid data, data tell processes. We too have formed a great alliance with the financial aid at MJC, Aurelia Gonzalez and I. And we are aligning most of our, almost, almost all of our processes are aligned with MJC now. So if a student comes to Columbia College and then transfers to MJC, they're going to see a very, very slight, you know, shift. But other than that, everything is aligned. So it is going to be a smooth transition. And hopefully those students from a desk will be coming to Columbia. I also wear the hat of basic needs coordinator for Columbia College. It is a very crucial component now for making sure that students are achieving their educational goals. We have many students who are. Are being faced with not being able to pay their housing, don't have any housing, can't find their next meal. They don't have gas to get to and from their fire academy class. It's, the economy is definitely changing and financially it is not quite enough to fill that bill. So we actually have been focusing on quite a few items for our students. For example, we have emergency grants. If you have a need that needs to be filled, you could provide documentation. There's a committee that meets, we go over and review. So far in the last year, we awarded 110 students, almost $152,000. And, and a lot of this was shut off notices for PG&E students who couldn't pay for gas. They couldn't pay for childcare. Helping getting them into a housing complex. So these are things that were. Desperately needed and I'm, I'm proud of the students who did apply because they're doing everything they can to stay. In college and continue their education rather than just drop out and never be heard from again. We also have a program up here at Columbia called our Welcome Home Sponsorship. Where we work with Cal, excuse me, Columbia College Housing. And we have 20 spots reserved for students who are homeless or homeless and secure. And we pay for them to stay in the dorms. They're right here on campus. They can go full time. They can access all of our services. We've had approximately 40 students go through that program. And I would say 15 of them or so have graduated and moved on to four-year colleges. We have a handful that's still with us today and we're going to be bringing in more. So it's been a wonderful adventure and we hope to keep, you know, improving our numbers. We offer food baskets on campus. We partner with our food pantry. We offer medical, dental and mental health assistance, not only for what we have on campus, but out in our community. We help with transportation such as gas cards. We help our students go and find employment. We connect them with our career transfer center as well as Department of Education or excuse me, EDD outside. We also promote financial literacy. Many of these students have never seen a check for over $2,000 all at one time. And we need to make sure they know how to budget, how they can prepare for the next check that's going to come in. It's almost like being paid to go to school. We can't be successful with our basic needs program without our community partners. Columbia College is small but mighty, but we can only do so much. So we do have many outside agencies for whom we have talked, contracted with and. Work directly to, to pass off our student with the needs that we can no longer fill at Columbia College. So after that, I will return this back to Annika Rogers and she will continue.
Good evening. My name is Annika Rogers Whitmer. I'm Director of Special Programs and. Get on to that right slide. So first I just want to do an overview of special programs. We typically don't interact with the student and say, hi, I'm from special programs. But it's a great way just organizationally to kind of talk about an umbrella of a group of services. So I'm going to start from the top just to make sure that everybody understands what we're talking about. It's basically any state or federal program that you have to apply for and have additional criteria to get into. Where there's, there's always an extra step. But of course we use that step to engage and connect with them. And be collaborative with our other departments, which I'll talk about in just a second. So I'm just going to kind of read through those so you can kind of understand the depth and breadth of what we're talking about when we say special programs. And then I'll go into a lot of really great examples. So Trio Department has two different grants. The, what we call the Transfer Services, which is sponsored by both the SSS Student Support Services and EOC. Educational Opportunity Center Grants. So that's a leveraged program where we're using both of those funds to serve transfer services students. And then the MEOC or Motherlode Educational Opportunity Center is going out into the community and serving about a thousand people. Little over a thousand people usually every single year. Our Disability Services or DSPS Disabilities Disabled Students Programs and Services is the official acronym. But a lot of times people look at you and go huh. So we've been shortening that to Disability Services for a while. Want to focus on the fact that that is both an onsite and an offsite program. There's a lot of collaboration out in the community. We both, we are starting to serve our incarcerated students with the Sierra Conservation Center. We are going out and working with high schools directly. So there's a lot of travel involved in multiple of these programs so far. Now that we are working directly with housing as well, that was a new. Office of Civil Rights. Funding last year that we will be providing accommodations to our housing. Looking at Brian's like, oh, really? Yeah. Yeah, that's a thing now. So that's a new. And then we're continuing to build our relationships. I just met with Tuolumne County Superintendent of Schools yesterday. About our adaptive PE and our skills development courses. So we're continuing to build those other partnerships. As well, under the heading of fostering forward, you may or may not have heard that term yet. That is also an umbrella type of a program. Where we are leveraging our next up funding, which is for foster youth ages 16 to 22. It's a very specific, you know, narrow. And then we're also have a homegrown program, Phoenix Scholars, that is under that umbrella as well, which is. Gone through a couple of different iterations over the years. And it's going through some additional development right now. Calworks is a standalone program that you're probably very familiar with, but within Calworks. There are childcare, work experience and TANF funds that are all being used and leveraged in different ways across our campus in really unique ways. And then finally, our, our last flagship special program is EOPNS. So Extended Opportunity Programs and Services. How many of you are ready for an acronym test? Anybody ready? Okay. We actually hand out like a seven-page document for every brand new employee with all the acronyms, just in case anybody wants a copy. Thank you to TLC for developing that. So the CARE Program and our Dream Resource Center are also housed within EOPNS. But if you could, look at this visual aid and draw lines. Basically in every single direction across every single program and then out. To every single program that has already been discussed and the ones that are going to be discussed in a few minutes. That's special programs. It is intensely collaborative, incredibly focused on the students' needs, the customized approach. So I know we talk about, a lot about equity funding and equity approach, but if you want to think about that in a way of. It really just means every student gets a personalized plan. And personalized success is really, really important to every program that we're talking about. Okay? So that's a good visual for you. So these, and if I didn't emphasize it before, these include both federal and state funds. So. And serving our special program students at Columbia College is a really great honor and my staff really wanted to impart that in this presentation. When I told them that we were doing this presentation, they feel honored and privileged every single day to do the type of work that they do. Another great way to kind of encompass what we are doing within special programs is to talk about the underserved. So the reason why there's extra funding, the reason why there's an extra step, there's some additional criteria. Is because these are our traditionally disproportionately impacted, underserved students, right? So we're offering that extra layer of services for them. We going with the theme of small and strong. We are small on number of staff. We are small on space and we are small on funds. But we use that to become really creative and really, really efficient. I like to say that I have a pretty flat hierarchy within our areas and the students feel that. Every student contact is. Every student feels like, oh, I don't have to go through three more layers to get what I need. I can get it right from the person that I'm talking to. And even if that person isn't going to be able to give them absolutely everything that they need, I'm going to give you a couple of examples here. They're going to be reassured that there's a really warm and effective handoff. Using Starfish, using all of the additional standing meetings and committees that we all serve on. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. So I want to emphasize that that is a way that we make it work. I'm not going to say we don't need more staff. I'm not going to say we don't need more space and I'm not going to say we don't need more money because that could always be helpful and useful. Keeping with the theme of all of us as managers. I'm serving in, anytime I have a staff outage, I'm serving in that space, right? I am doing that actual job. I'm sitting at the window. I'm answering those phones. I'm answering those emails. So. I really value that in a lot of ways. In fact, one of the reasons why I won't ever leave this position. Is because of that ability to interact and still have that connection. So it's quite an honor. So looking at all of our nested programs, let's talk about how that looks at within the rest of the campus. So we are deeply, deeply connected with our Vision 2030 goals. All of the DEIA really flows through all of our special programs. Our Student Equity Plan, we are front and center. Every single one of those initiatives. Are targeted through our special programs in addition to all of our other instructional support programs. And student service programs. I did want to highlight two additional areas that don't really have. A direct, stable funding, direct, stable staffing, et cetera. Our LGBTQ services, we have been fortunate enough to receive. Multiple one-time fundings, but they're still one-time fundings. So we're, we're getting broader and better with that. I wanted to highlight a couple of successes. That's a collaboration with ASCC and our clubs and I'm going to just, sorry. This is Tobias. Tobias is going to talk a little bit later, but our Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club. Is humongous. It is thriving. It is huge. It is not just. It is allyship. It is students in our LGBTQ plus community. It is interactive out in the community. It's, it's really bonkers and amazing. I, I was the advisor for about 10 years and I've passed that torch, but I just wanted to highlight that for a moment because it's a great. Collaboration with ASCC and Outreach and Retention and of course our clubs. Native Services is another one that I wanted to highlight because. You probably have seen her speak before, but we have Dr. Stephanie Beaver-Guzman, who is an amazing, amazing resource. She's. A native Hoopa enrolled tribal member herself. But with her leadership over the many years, we have been able to develop. And we still have a long way to go, but we have been able to develop really good working relationships with multiple tribal partners locally. We have an ongoing Native Student College Tour that happens every summer now and we've been praised. Our campus tours have been well praised for the level of sophistication and customization that we provide. They go to CSUs and UCs and they say ours is always best. And most useful for their students. So we really wanted to highlight that. We have a native graduation. That is ongoing and that has been very, very well received and is continuing to grow. So I mentioned a couple of those points right there. And two more things before I wrap up is I wanted to highlight our standing committee participation. So oftentimes when I go to conferences and trainings and I interact with other Directors of Special Programs. Which by the way is usually like, oh, there's the Director of DSPS, the Director of EOPS, the Director of these things, Director of Things, and then there's me. Right? It's like Director of all of those things. Not to say I don't enjoy that. But I do want to again emphasize that the small and the multiple hats that our departments are wearing and just how complicated. And intense that can be. So it's, it's something to take into consideration. But to combat that, again, our creativity is we've created a lot of standing committees. Where people from every single student services, instructional and every single department within special programs are serving on these standing committees. So that integrated approach of the weeks of welcome, wow. Financial literacy, wellness, new student onboarding, the Student Success Council as a whole, DEIA. Cultural Enrichment Committee, Transfer Team, our Graduation Committee, and now adding in Employer Relations and Workability Committees. I mean, I could go on and on. I'll stop. I know it's hard, but. It's really, really critical that you understand. The layers in which we are dealing with. So we're not just doing a single program or a single job. It is always. Interwoven into the campus as a whole. So if I want to close with the idea that we. In special programs and all of the, the programs that I've mentioned so far. We really focus on different types of interventions that may or may not come across in other places. So proactive counseling is a little bit different. It's where we are going out and seeking the student and bringing them in and giving them milestones to follow through on. The advising is a little bit different than counseling. It's provided by high-level, high-trained staff members. And it includes coaching modality and nudging modalities, which again are a little bit. Different than kind of the traditional approaches. Peer mentoring is huge within special programs as it, as it is in a lot of other of our departments. I know Courtney focuses on that with student ambassadors. Amongst many others, our Academic Achievement Center tutoring is, they're really peer mentors, right? They're role modeling this behavior. They're not just providing a single one and done type of service. They're really creating a family environment. Hands-on, step-by-step of support, right? We're not letting that student walk out the door until. The application is actually submitted to their transfer institution right there with us, right? We're not saying, oh, here's some resources and go take that on yourself, right? We're saying, no, 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 let's just get that done right now. Providing student spaces and that sense of belonging and inclusion. And then being really inclusive with our visuals. I know that sounds like a silly thing. But I cannot emphasize how important it is that a campus, a student walks onto our campus. And sees that their population, their demographic is being represented. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to our bookend of Courtney Sutton. Just going to wrap it up for us. Yep.
You get me again because I have the unique title of outreach and retention. So I get the privilege of helping students in the outreach component. Which gives me a great advantage to help them retain and see them all the way through their time, right? Back to the timeline. We started a timeline beginning and now we're going to go all the way through. And so campus engagement, so we've talked a lot about applications. We've talked a lot about the beginning processes, even special. We've talked a lot about the beginning processes, even special programs, the one additional step. But Campus Engagement and Retention, we know leads to higher GPAs, students more likely to succeed. So when we talk about Campus Engagement, it does begin with orientation from the time they apply to welcoming them with that nice welcome email, a student intake survey. So at Columbia, every student intake survey that a student completes, we're responding to that and looking at each individual response. The campus events that were highlighted that Annika mentioned through a collaborative committee on campus that is all just because we want to be on that committee and provide these wellness programs that are everything from the Week of Welcome, New Student Welcome, where again, we invite parents and families on campus. We also, one of our new signature programs, I think, is our Wellness Fair that we've moved from the spring to the fall, where we invite community partners as well as on-campus partners to address all those dimensions of wellness, health, mental health, physical fitness, career wellness, financial wellness. All of those mentions coming to one place. And then again, I'm super lucky that I get to have this role where I have continued support. So the areas that I'm overseeing include Career Services, connecting them to student leadership on campus, as well as connecting them to counseling in a way of degree planning, right? And moving forward to retention. So with retention, what thing that we're saying all the time right now, good data in is good data out. But a lot of those data processes are manual. So within Degree Planner, a lot of the touchpoints that Annika mentioned is using Starfish as we put students into cohorts and managing them within these cohorts. That's a manual process to look every degree, degree program and then put them in that academic program. Add a perk code for my IT folks in the room that adds them into the correct program, whether that be Athletics or EOPS. Those are manual processes, but in the end, that's how we're communicating with them and being targeted and nudging them along the way. But I will highlight, that's a person, that is a manual person. And our counselors putting good data in and good data out. Starfish, you're never not going to hear me talk about it. So that is a retention strategy in itself. We send out two progress surveys that faculty are completing for their courses twice a semester. Once really early on because we know we're going to lose students in there in that first couple of weeks if we don't connect with them just due to technology, finances, whatever that might be. Then we send another one out around that midterm time to connect with them. And again, those are individual counselors following up, individual peer advisors and peer mentors following up with a phone call. We vetted those with Academic Senate and see how faculty feel like they're going. And we go back to Academic Senate and make sure that those progress surveys are working as effectively as they can. And the flags and to-dos are those nudges, are those communications both to the student and to us as internal faculty and staff to create a seamless success. So as Annika mentioned, we don't want them to have to tell their story over and over again and be in a circle of loops still not getting the help that they need. We want this process at the bottom to feel seamless for them, right? They're just moving through the steps. And then referrals are working amazing. So raise that referral and someone will get in touch with that student and connect with them about what it is that they need. And at the end, we have student success and all the bottom is highlighted, right? So after we see all these layers of support that are put into place, we're hoping that at the end, that equals student success for that student, whether that be a certificate, whether that be a phlebotomy program, whether that be an AST that they're completing while still in high school, right? Those are all the ways that we're meeting students where they're at. Do you have questions for us in Student Services?
Any questions from the public? Trustee questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And now we'll move on to Association Reports. The first is from the Yosemite Faculty Association Vice President Grievance Officer Derek Whitick. Welcome Derek.
Good evening. My name's Derek Whitick and I'm a General Counselor here at Columbia, that's okay. As well as serving as the YFA Vice President and Grievance Officer. I wish to take a moment to express my gratitude to the district for their support and collaboration with YFA this year. We concluded contract negotiations successfully and I look forward to negotiations this upcoming year for our collective bargaining agreement. Our goals for the next contract will be to improve the faculty evaluation process as well as address parity for English comp and part-time, full-time instructors. YFA is also very appreciative of the district efforts to address timely retro payments for faculty. We recognize the hard work by the district on this, which resulted in an agreeable process. And thank you very much for Trevor and Dr. Richards. We appreciate your support with that. We also want to acknowledge the successful employer, employee relations meetings between YFA and the district that have allowed us to address issues between faculty and administration that arise with a positive and collaborative approach. These meetings help us identify potential problems and head them off at the pass. So usually settling issues long before they can become grievances. We value that relationship that is developed between YFA, Human Resources, and District Admin. We also look forward to the swift conclusion of all matters pertaining to our forestry faculty at Columbia. This remains the most important single issue for us. You're already well aware of how important our forestry faculty are to the program, to the college and to our forestry students who have endured, endured a full year of missing their mentors. Finally, I'm asking the board for their support and ideas in helping to see Columbia College through a period of rapid growth of programs and support services. In the past three years, we've added programs that require additional faculty and staff as well as space to house these programs. We have some unanticipated tenured faculty departures, including three counselors and several other teaching faculty. We are a small college and we need a full faculty to serve our students. We will need to move quickly to fill these new positions and replace these departures. And we are asking for significant support from the board and Human Resources towards this goal. Thank you very much for your time. And the Yosemite Faculty Association looks forward to continued collaboration with the district in providing instruction and services for our valued students.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, we just like to add, with respect to that, I know on the agenda tonight under Personnel, there is a appointment of a full-tenured track counselor who is, I think, well-known by your YFA president, I think.
Yes.
So we're growing our own.
We're very grateful.
Okay, next we have the Classified Senate Academic Reports. We're pleased to have Columbia College Classified Senator, President Dylan Gamas.
Hello, how y'all doing today? Thank you very much for having me. My name's Dylan Gamas. I'm an Admissions and Records Specialist. I'm also the current Classified Senate President. And I just want to say I'm very proud to be representing Classified Senate here today. I just started my role as President this month, but I did serve as President-elect for some time before that. And I have learned a lot of valuable things and I look forward to learning a lot more. And I did want to take a moment to shout out how important our classified staff is to the function of this institution. I can say wholeheartedly that everybody here cares deeply about our students and about their success. And every day I see people going above and beyond in their various roles. I also wanted to highlight our recent collaborations with Academic Senate. So thank you Derek and Academic Senate for collaborating with us. We're building bridges, building unity, and we're hoping to continue that in this following year. We'll be meeting with our new exec team tomorrow actually and begin planning for next year. So that's exciting. Our focus is going to be on professional development so that through our growth, we can also help our students grow. I don't really have much else to report because it is the summer and we're just getting going. But again, thank you very much for having me and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to the Student Senate Activity Report, Associate Students of Columbia College, President Alexander Jokes. Who did I miss? No, she's not here. Ah, see, you thought you had me, but you didn't.
Hi, I'm the new president. I'm Tobias. I go by they-him pronouns. And I'll be the new student academic, goodness, ASCC student president for the 2024-2025 academic year. I am a forestry major here and I've been going here for three years. And I'll let my Vice President introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Leandra. I'm the Vice President for Associated Students of Columbia College. This is my first official year here. I was a two-year dual-mold student before this. I'm a pre-nursing major, allied health slash emergency medical services as well.
Yeah, so this year, the ASCC was very successful in a lot of things that they did. They put on a lot of great events that had a lot of student turnout, like our cram night and our Duck Duck Goose event that had a lot of student engagement. We also had the most clubs we've had since COVID. And we created a Student Center food and school supply resource for students on campus. Upcoming this year, we're looking to continue all of those things. We're going to continue increasing the clubs on campus and the student engagement with events and others, other things. We're also going to be continuing to give those resources at our Student Center. That includes the food and the school supplies. We are also going to be updating our Constitution and our club charter form so that things can run more smoothly through the next year. Though it is summer, so everything's mostly in planning stages. I just want to say that I'm very excited to work with all the other ASCC members as we continue to help make Columbia College a fun and safe and supportive place for all the students.
Thank you. Next we have Joanna Romero, Associate Students Vice President and her team.
Okay, so good afternoon Board of Trustees. My name is Joanna Romero. A little bit about myself. I joined ASMJC to continue my, my journey on serving students and improving their experience on going to school. Besides MJC, I am a student worker. I work for the MJC Outreach and Community Partnerships. Yeah, my major, I'm currently undecided. I bounce from majors. I originally was a psych major, but then I switched to public health and then I went to become a health, like a health major, but now undecided. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Associated Students of Modesto Junior College. Here with me, I have the ASMJC Prospect Secretary Joanna Smith and Director of Political Development Brett Baptist. Before becoming an executive, I served as a Senator during the fall and spring semesters. As for the summer semester, ASMJC has began training for our new incoming Senate. We are currently introducing our Senate to various MJC programs such as EOPS, Mesa, Trio, and Emoja. In addition, we have already covered the YCCD structure, including the ASM, no, sorry, including the MJC structure. On July 17th, we will be having our first Special Senate Meeting of the Year to approve our incoming Senate members and Welcome Week items. Regarding the fall semester, as executives have met with our advisors to discuss Welcome Week and the preparations that we are planning to do before, for Welcome Week to run as smoothly as possible. As some of you, as some of you may know, Welcome Week is hosted in the first week of the fall semester. It is a significant event for incoming and returning students to come, connect with our campus. From Monday and Tuesday of that week, ASMJC is planning on having like booths, booths on both on our East and West Campus as a way to help students navigate campuses in case of their loss. We are planning to also be providing food for students so then they can get a chance to eat in between classes. And then, you know, on Wednesday, we have our West Fest on our West Campus and Welcome Day will be on our East Campus. Additionally, also on that week, it's going to be the first day of Flow. And the team, our team is looking forward to Welcome Week as it's one of our biggest events that we have. And then we can get the chance to interact and give students, you know, like a welcoming to MJC. And yeah, we are currently conducting interviews to have someone fill the president position. So hopefully we have one by the next meeting.
How about you?
I would love to, but I have a lot of other commitments.
Understand.
Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to five points, three presentations, update Yosemite College Community District Chancellor, Dr. Yell.
Thank you. Good evening.
She's here. Oh, I'm sorry, Professor McKistic, I shafted you. See, I gotta do this at least once. I gotta keep my record. You're out. I'll give you an extra minute because of this.
Well, I don't think I'm going to need the extra minute. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Our Academic Senate Presidents send their regrets. They could not be here tonight. MJC Senate President Flores did ask me to extend her thanks to faculty, classified professionals, and students who contributed to the Pride Education Conference with a special shout out to our student trustee for his work at the event. Since our last meeting, I have been privileged to have discussions with several of the leaders at this table and I hope to continue that in the next few weeks. Remind myself that another perspective and additional fact, even just one more conversation can make all the difference in accomplishing what we are trying to do. With that, I'm going to join my faculty leader colleagues in their contribution to brevity in this meeting by concluding my remarks and thank you again.
Very good. Chance, thank you.
It is my pleasure to call on Dr. Trent to give the college report from Columbia College.
I think for tonight, our team did an excellent job, so no report. But I do want to acknowledge and my deepest gratitude and thank you for, first and foremost, you know, Dr. Melissa Raby, excellent job leading the Student Services. And I'm looking at just in order, I see Mike almost like excited to do enrollment. Too bad we couldn't do the tour, but we have a whole center that say do enrollment. So hopefully when you come back in October, you could tour our facility. Then Leslie, always in there, almost friendly, say hi and really do the hard work. I understand that. So thank you. And Manu had a great conversation today. We're looking at our fraud team and how we get all, and I love how she say, we don't get anybody go through. So you know the commitment's there. And Courtney, you see our Starfish Queen, I truly believe in Starfish as well. So retention and also outreach for our students is important. And of the passion of Annika, I always joke around and say, you know, no matter where you put Annika, it's almost be a lot of work and a lot of leveraging to everything. And you know, honestly, I'm very deep in touch because when I hear the work you do, it is a lot. I recognize that and I do say thank you for that and really say, you know what? We're in this together, we're going to get it done. So just thank you. I appreciate you. That's my report.
Thank you.
Dr. Sanders from MJC.
It was great to hear the Columbia team sharing again with the smiles and the joy and everything that they do. I really learned a lot by working with this group of people and try to bring that spirit and that, that forward-looking aspect to Modesto Junior College whenever I can. My report is about Modesto Junior College. I was in a conversation this week with a colleague and he says, what gives you hope at MJC? Kind of one of those deep thought questions. And I didn't really know how to answer it at the time, but I've been dwelling on it. So I'm going to share with you quickly because that's the theme tonight, but 10 things. Number one, enrollment is up. Hundred-plus in the summer, couple hundred in the fall. Students are returning to MJC in droves, although your comment gives me some pause. I got to look into whether that's university students. But if they are university students and they come to us and they find out how awesome we are, they're going to stay. So there we go. Number two, job applications are up. We've had some hiring pools that are just suddenly really deep. Makes me think that our community is again, understanding that we're a great place to work and they want to be a part of things. So that gives me hope. For the third year in a row, this is number three, MJC had a float in the Independence Day Parade in Modesto. And our team of creatives, the, the design team from the theater and then the welding team is getting involved in these things and, and our, our outreach team, fantastic. Once again, we, we won the parade, at least our category, which is very good. Although I heard this morning at the Kuanis meeting that we beat my Kuanis float in that same nonprofits category. So I feel a little bad, but not that bad. We had, this is the part that really gives me hope. Seventy-five students, faculty, staff, and administrators came out to walk. And I was on, I had the privilege of being a judge in the parade, not judging the MJC category, by the way. But when the sea of yellow shirts walked around the corner with our float in tow, it was really an amazing thing. Two special stars were on the float all the way through. Trustees Garrett and Biggs were out there in the heat with us again. They have been absolutely faithful in every time we've had a parade, except for the one time that Darren decided to twist his ankle on the curb. Next year, we do intend to win the overall trophy though in the parade because we're going to have our brand-new trailer that's built into a pirate ship that's going to win the, the overall award. I have to be sure not to judge that. Number four, speaking of volunteers, here it's the hottest part of ever in our region. And a bunch of people, again tonight, are down at the fair stocking, staffing the MJC volunteer table there. We're, we're doing an outreach table. It's going very well. That gives me hope. Outreach and Community Partnerships team, number five, held their first enrollment super session. It was a successful event with 80 families coming to the Welcome Center. We've got 42 applications out of it, 50 applications for financial aid and 72 of those 80 students registered for classes. We have another one coming up on August 1st. So I'm very hopeful about those. Number six, as I look out the windows onto the quad of the Morris Building, there's Jorge Camarena. And just watching Jorge out there playing volleyball with Trio students, Trio, early college students coming onsite, just gives me great hope. Him, the other outreach- Him, the other outreach team members that are out there, uh, this other, also in this, uh, our student trustee Gustavo Castro Home was in the cafeteria this week with a, a group of EOPS students. I walked in to get a, a hamburger and I came back out. He was there with all the students. He brought them all over and said, hi, all of these new students coming to MJC because of the smiles and the encouragement from our, from our team. Um, up to number seven now, dual enrollment is up. Uh, when I started at MJC back in 2022, returned there, we had one C cap class. Now we have 77. I was doing a little math with Matt's, uh, comment and, uh, uh, we, we need like five times as much as he's got to like 30, we got more to do. So we got more work to do there. Uh, number eight, uh, we continue to have, uh, partnerships with public safety and healthcare that are growing. Another meeting with the Stanislaus County Sheriff, we're meeting with the chief of police. We're talking about modern policing, law enforcement, ways to build accessible degrees for, uh, active law enforcement and firefighters to be able to advance in their degree, in their, uh, workforce. Uh, we're expanding our nursing program. We're now part of the nursing expansion program. And we're adding a licensed vocational nurse. Number nine, on July 25th, this is coming up in two weeks. The Patterson mayor, Patterson superintendent of schools, vice president of instructions, Stanislaus superintendent of schools for the county, county superintendent. Trustee Nicolau, who's not here tonight, chancellor Young, myself, a couple others are going to Madera Community College to learn what it means to become a community college for our third college initiative over on the west side. We're going to build a plan for what it's going to take us to get there. And lastly, intercollegiate competition is continuing to thrive at MJC, which gives me great hope. Uh, our debate team, our agriculture teams, our dance teams, and of course, our amazing athletics teams continue to, to thrive. These programs require incredible dedication from faculty champions to make it happen. And just the fact that they have that heart and they continue to, you know, drive these programs forward gives me great hope. And as my final thing, I will now reveal our latest trophy.
Bring it.
From the, uh, school of agriculture in the, uh, 2023 power pulling series winner from the multiple Motherlode County Fair, Gustina FFA, Stanislaus County Fair and the full entire three champs.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the president? Moving along, 5.4 travel report is for information only. I've been put under, I've been put under pressure here. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent items. First of all, is there any member of the public wanting to pull any consent item? Seeing none. Any trustee want to pull any? The Board of Trustees approves actions, item six, two, the recommended action is the Board of Trustees approves action item 6.2 through 6.8 consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Trustee Garrett, who have a second? Trustee Hinton, student trustee, can we get your advisory vote, please?
Um, aye.
Okay, all members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passed.
Mr. Board President, may I?
You may.
Hey, which is.
Even though he's putting the pressure on to get things back, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, but this is, this is one of the important things that we do, which is to recognize the hard work and contributions of our district employees and recognize them in their, in their new future, which is called retirement. So first on the list is Steve Harmon, 19 years of service, uh, maintenance specialist, carpenter, facilities, planning, maintenance and transportation at Central Services. You know, I always, when I see positions like this, I always harken back to, to COVID. And, and the hard work and dedication of our, of our maintenance staff, our classified professional in those, in those positions that were working behind the scenes to keep the colleges open and make sure that, that facility needs were being met. And, and everyone felt safe in, in their environment. So I want to thank Steve for his 19 years of service, but particularly his dedication during COVID. And finally, Amy Nielsen, 11 years of service, director of development, community outreach and development foundation, uh, Columbia College. I can only imagine, uh, what Amy saw. Are you here?
Oh, yeah.
Look at you. Well, you can at least stand and, and take a bow maybe if you so desire, but I just want to, I just want to thank you for everything that you, you did for the community, for the institution. I can't imagine how many lives that you have touched. You're going to take that with you in your new future. And I just want to say thank you and all the best. So that's all I have.
Okay, moving right along, we'll go to, uh, item seven, action item discussions, uh, 7.1 personnel negotiations, YFA, YCCD. Opportunity for members of the public to comment on mutually agreed initial proposal from the district and YFA. Initially sunshine on June 12th, 2024. Uh, the recommended action is that the board of trustees hold a public comment period to receive comments on the mutually agreed initial proposal initially sunshine on June 12th attached to June, July 10th agenda. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve.
So th- this was the first item is just to take the, any public comments and you'll move to 7.2.
Okay. So we're not having to do a motion on this?
No.
Even though my cheat says I do?
Probably.
Okay, well, I just, I just want to clarify that. Okay, moving on.
Apologize, that was my error.
That's all right. We, I, I have big shoulders. I take the blame. Okay, 7.2 negotiations, YFA, YCCD, adoption of the mutually agreed initial proposal from the district. The recommended action is that the board of trustees adopt the mutually agreed initial proposal from the district and YFA attached to July 10th agenda. I want to tell.
So moved.
Very good.
I'll second it.
We have a second student trustee?
Aye.
All in favor, trustees?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, going down to, uh, board comments, uh, starting with, uh, trustee Hinton. Do you have any?
Is it request for future board items first?
Yes, request for future board items, agenda items. Do you have any? No, trustee Aguilar? No, trustee Beggs? No?
Yeah, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Get up there.
Um, so I, I had asked, and I guess at some point we will get a report soon, I hope, on, um, IT, because I had a, I was given a confidential packet that was, but I'd, I'd love to see just laid out for us. I think it would be really educational, see all the programs we have, all the software, all the licensing fees. We know a lot about starfish.
We're covered on starfish. You don't have to say anything about starfish.
But, but there are other programs that, that are part of that soup of, of, um, IT stuff that would, in, in fact, at one point we were told we could even tour some of the hardware facilities, just because it, it would be interesting. So anyway, I, I would love that. And then, um, the other thing that, that I've asked for and I, maybe the board needs to vote on, but I, I, teaching is the thing that, the main thing that we do, and I would love to have, and we've asked for faculty presentations, maybe every other month, highlighting every program so, so that we can learn about, I mean, I know our egg program is outstanding. Speech is out, you know, but just going through and letting the faculty say, this is our program. This is what we do. These are the, because especially now that we've rearranged things into new schools and, you know. And I hope, uh, the person earlier who said she changed her major several times, that's what college is about. Discovering what you want to do. It's okay. Um, uh, I didn't end up, I didn't start out as an English major. Anyway, um, so it's interesting. It would be interesting. I'd love to have, uh, not, not big, huge deals, but just this is our program from faculty. So I would love that.
You sure you don't have anything else? It's okay. Yeah.
Oh, I'll come up with something else, but I'll, I'll let you go.
Trustee Garrett?
Um, for future agenda items? No.
Trustee Davis? Okay, let's go with board comments and we'll start with you, trustee Davis.
Just a couple of comments. One is I truly appreciated the, the presentation tonight. And when you discussed your outrage and your dual enrollment, but one of the things that struck me is your commitment to face-to-face contact and how important that is, particularly for first generation students, but really every kid that who's in high school. And you really demonstrated tonight how important it is that you build relationship with students. And appreciate that. And that came through very strongly tonight. I want you to know that. Also, I always want to share in trustee Garrett's comments, Amy. Congratulations on your retirement. You do a fabulous job for the college and for the, uh, foundation. I had the privilege of being the board's, uh, representative to the foundation. And Amy ensures that we have a well-agendized, good functioning meeting with all the information that's there in advance. And just really appreciate the work. And like Aaron said, the, the lives that the foundation has touched through, through your involvement countless. So congratulations again.
Very good. Mr. Garrett?
Graciela, can you bring up my PowerPoint, please? Um, first, I, I, great presentation, uh, from, from the, uh, folks here at, at Columbia. That's what we like to see. You know, we, we talk about it and concepts, but it's nice to hear that, that things are working and we're improving how we function. And, and most importantly, how we serve our students. So I echo what, uh, trustee Davis had to say. Second, Brian, I want to thank you for reaching out. I mean, obviously I spent almost 27 years in public safety. You can't imagine how critical it is that we provide continuing education, particularly higher education to our law enforcement, uh, professionals because statistics have shown year over year, going back forever, that the more education, the more degrees that they have, the better the face-to-face contacts are with the public. Use of force and use of incidents go way down. So I want to compliment you for taking that on as an initiative and, and I just wish, wish you great, you and your team, great success. Finally, I, I want to, uh, say well done to, to our students for the July 4th, uh, parade. I mean, I got to sit on the float, okay, on a, on a bail of hay, great. But when you saw, as Brian pointed out, all of these students show up in, in their yellow t-shirts. And it was hot. I mean, we had somebody that, that was part of student gear from out of town, came in to help. And the first thing she walks up to, to, uh, Leslie and I and says, is it normally this hot? I'm not used to this. And I go, no, it's a little on the high side. So, but you know, we got through it. We, I think we were number 85. Forty percent was done by the time we, 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 uh, started off, but it was the students. I mean, they were so energized and everything was cheer and they had their fight songs. I mean, it was, so thank you guys so much. Please take that back to your peers. It was incredible. So, you know, it was worth the heat and everything else just to see that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Student trustee, anything?
Um, I just want to say thank you to Columbia for the presentation. I think it's really great hearing how you guys connect with students just from me and my different roles that I have had as a student worker, um, also as a student ambassador at Modesto Junior College. Um, just hearing that you guys wear many hats and, you know, you're still able to outreach to these students. Because it is true, you know, connecting with these students, hosting these welcome day events. Um, these help, like, these help these students essentially stay off the streets. Um, we worked like how President Sanders has said, I introduced him to some of my current students right now. Um, currently this would be my 125 students I've tutored since I've been at, at MJC and two more semesters, um, uh, going. And, you know, these students are first generation, lower income, sometimes foster youth students. Um, so, you know, being able to show them that there's, there's more to school than besides a textbooks that they can come out. They can work at the school that they can, that there's events, that there are resources to help them. It's really great seeing that involvement both at Columbia and at MJC. And also it was really great seeing, um, trustee Garrett and trustee Beggs out there. It was really hot and President Sanders, it was.
I wasn't shit.
Yeah. Um, we started hearing your voice as we were walking along the way and we were like, all right, guys, MJC, MJC. But it was a really great parade. Um, and that's pretty much it for my comments.
Thank you. Trustee Hinton?
Well, when they get an ADA ramp up the float, I'll show up.
There you go.
Until then, I keep having to say no. So, but I heard it was really good and look forward to participating.
Trustee Aguilar?
Um, I just wanted to tell President Sanders, great work on, on, I know the, with you, I know it's been you and a lot of people involved with, that, that with, trying to connect with the Patterson people. Thank you for all your hard work. It looks like we're finally getting something done. So I appreciate all your hard work. So, thank you.
Trustee Beggs?
Well, I really appreciated the presentation too, and it, it represents a sea change. When I went to college, it seemed like the goal was to make it hard to register and hard to do stuff. It was sort of a gauntlet and, you know, it go back and come back later or go to this other window. And this is such a paradigm shift and it's a wonderful one. And I just want to thank you all for all the hard work you're doing to help people feel like they belong and to succeed because that's what we want. And so I, I just real, can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Um, as far as other activities, I did the usual tri-chair meetings. I don't know if you know, but it, the way the board works, we have a president, the past president and the, um, VP. And so we meet to do some extra planning and whatever for agenda reviews, et cetera. So I, I went to those and, um, I enjoy so much participating in the parades and I, we had a flood one year. It was, you know, just unbelievably wet. And then, then we had, you know, heat stroke, but it's okay because they take really good care of us. They have water for everybody. They check on everybody. They had a blanket for people like me who are allergic to grass and hay. And, and it was just, I, I really appreciate that and it, it's managed really well. And then we wait and we wait and we wait. And it's okay, you know, when, you know, one year we were at the front of the parade. This time we're 85. It's okay. It's a wonderful experience and our community comes out in the heat and cheers for us. And all along the route, I heard, I heard go MJC from people sitting out on the street in the heat. So we live in a great community where people care and it's, it's a wonderful thing to experience. Thank you.
President Sanders, congratulations on the National Athletics Award. And I also want to thank you so much on starting to realize our goal to increase the nursing program. I know there's a pre-nursing student in the room who's going to be very happy to hear that there's going to be more, more, uh, slots. President Tran, thank you for hosting us today and, and I'm so impressed with your staff and the student services, uh, production. I even okay about hearing about starfish again, but, uh, we're, we're very happy about that. But no, I'm just so excited about how we've, both presidents, how you've taken it, the bull by the horns and you, you've almost got us past pre-COVID enrollment. And I know other community colleges are struggling. We're not. I was particularly pleased to hear that we're cutting down on the fraud. And with that, I'm going, uh, our next meeting will be August 14th at two, uh, uh, 2024, back at the district office. I'm pleased to join the meeting at 6:57.